You still get outside the country?
Yeah, we can still get it in South Africa. I haven't tried Australia.
We're seeing it in Brazil.
Well, diet coke in South Africa is just everywhere now. Even Kenya was awful. So that's what we just have in the press there.
Looks like we have Jay online.
Okay. And Paul will be walking in any minute. And is Wayne here today?
He is gonna be virtual.
Oh, okay.
On the calendar, there's a West Fest July.
It's gotta be. Yeah, I'll make sure we think so. It's on the actual calendar.
Well, the on our agenda calendar.
Oh, I'll make sure. It may have been a copy and paste type situation. I'll make sure we get it back.
West Fest part two.
Just in case you didn't have fun enough the first go around.
Okay.
Thursday night, if you want to do the ride, it's the best night to go.
What's that?
Thursdays. The least amount of people there to interfere with your fun activities. Those right here means. We all overnight. I don't know. We almost lost Kate, literally. We were having seats and they tipped and went and went around. And she passed out and they had just the thick bar in front of you, but she's so little, she just slid. She could have slid. And luckily, Ashley was next to me and she's like, Kate. And I looked at Courtney and she put her arm out and was able to keep her in. But that was. See that? So when people die in these, I'm like, yeah. We almost, we almost had that. So my agenda goes.
If you're not logging in.
It might be because it needs a password this time and I don't have time to look for it.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe not such a good thing.
All right, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order our study meeting for the West Valley City Council. It is June thirteenth, four thirty-one P M in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present, either online or in person. At the table, we have Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Weststone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune and myself. And our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. Online, we have Councilman Bizia Manu and our city manager, Mr. Pyle. Our first matter of business is our minutes. I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion on our minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion through.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hey, and those pass unanimously. We will review our agendas for tonight, our regular meeting. Are there any changes from staff?
Yes, ma'am. Thanks. We do have just some updated information on the ordinance considering change in the public comment meeting. So I believe Eric was going to just go over that. I think we did talk about this in the last meeting, but just to make sure we were clear on what those additions were. And this has to do with the handling of public hearings.
Okay. Thank you.
Your work.
Mr. Bunderson.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. Quick change to the thing that we discussed last week is we did add some language that during public hearings, there's a standard five minutes. And then the other thing that we added is if under certain circumstances, the mayor wants to change that, the mayor may change that five minute limit, but we'll just start with all public meetings have a five minute. Everything else is the same.
Okay. That works. So public comment will stay at five minutes.
Public comment.
Comment, yeah. Or you're saying public hearings are going to.
Public hearings, like tax hearings, zoning, that kind of stuff.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to fix my computer at the same time, which was not working.
Yeah. So it says the mayor shall have discretion to alter the length of the comment or the number of speakers as circumstances warrant. And that's what we talked about last week is if you got three hundred people, you know, you can, you can make that change.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We talked about the once a month or is that still the desire of council?
I think it's a good idea to talk about it. Sounds like some people have changed their minds.
Hey.
Yeah, I like, I like the three minutes. But I think I would be in favor of not going to once a month. Keep around.
After listening last.
Yeah.
There's. I think I'd be in favor of not going to once a month.
The ones, the ones were hurting the most, the ones that come most often, or the ones that would also be hurting those that don't come often and they show up and.
Just that one time.
At one time and they don't have the opportunity.
Wrong week.
Yeah.
So and yeah, I think we need to be more available, not less. So I'm okay with every week and, but I think three minutes would be nice. If you can't say it in three minutes, then
and then.
Send an email.
And then what about the public hearings, five minutes?
Yeah, I'm I, I think if you can't say it in three minutes, send an email. I think it goes for both, but, but I'm okay with whatever.
Hey, Eric.
So, yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I did just want to make a comment on the public hearing five minutes. And I think for most people that were getting up and, and speaking, the three minutes would be plenty, but sometimes you have the developers themselves that come up during the public hearing and want to talk about the project itself. Oftentimes that might take the full five minutes just to describe. Not that that also can't be changed, as, as Eric was saying by you as the mayor, but just as another item to consider.
Okay, thank you. So I think what I'm asking is, do you want to change it? You want every week? But do you want to put the time limits on or do you want to just not worry about this and leave it as it is? That's why I'm asking specifics.
Yeah, so we could, we could vote to approve it. We could vote to deny it, or we could vote to amend and approve.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to get kind of have you discuss where you're most likely to fall and.
I think the only change that I would be, would like to see is the end of the week, what public comment. That's what public indicated last week.
Right.
And also, as I talked about it, I thought, yeah, that's we can do that.
Okay.
Other boards I want to have public comment every meeting. They don't meet weekly, monthly, but they don't give much public comment either.
Mayor, Mike, leaning us towards keeping it open every week, but going to three minutes for both public comment and the hearing with the discretion to amend that time limit as needed. I hear that's where it feels like some others are leaning towards that as well. But is there anyone who'd like to make a case for the once a month?
I don't hear anybody wanting that anymore.
So then it looks like the motion, as you can see on the screen here, would, would be to not change the ordinance here, or so it would just read during each regular city council meeting, there will be a period not to exceed thirty minutes of citizen comments. We're not going to make any change on that.
Thank.
And then let's see where, oh, it was tiny. No person speaking during the citizen comment period shall allow his or her comments to exceed three minutes. That's a change. And then G, citizen speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against other citizens, city staff and the city council. And then the new one this week, speakers during public hearings shall be limited to five minutes. The mayor shall have discretion to alter the length of comment or the number of speakers as circumstances warrant. So it sounds like the motion would be just to not make the changes in line thirty-three.
Yeah, I'm looking at the ones I'll be making the motion.
Yeah. Okay, line thirty-three.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Was that the only change on the regular meeting? That's the only adjustment? Okay. And then did anybody else have questions on the regular meeting? Or staff? Okay, and then we have our building authority meeting after. Does that chair have any questions or does anybody have any questions on that one? No questions? Everybody's good with that. Then we'll go back to public hearing for next week. It'll be the budget opening. And I'll turn the time over to Mr. Welch to go over that one.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be seeing a lot of me in the next few weeks as we continue the budget. Changes and adoptions. This is the regular and final budget opening or amendment that we proposed to the city council for the fiscal year, which will close on the end of June. And this, as you are aware, and the public may be aware, amendments are periodically required to accommodate the normal operations of the city with regards to expenditures and, and revenues that come in during the normal course of operations. A couple of things I just wanted to point out, and then I'd be happy to take any questions that you had. Number six is the final FEMA reimbursement that we received for the COVID events that we had. And that's been kind of a couple of years in coming. We also had some additional federal funding that came through the state for the wetlands park program. Park project that was two million dollars. And then we also had some, some money from HUD for the C D B G grant for the bicycle pump track. There's a couple of other projects that you will recognize that have been to the council already, for example, like the pump track and, and other things that have come to the council. There's the first year of the debt service for the justice court renovation, which comes due this year. You won't see that next year as it's already been in the budget going forward. So you'll just see that for the initial year. Let's see. Three million dollars is a grant that is coming from the city. It's actually a reimbursement grant for widening thirty-nine hundred south. That's a little over eight million dollar project and there are various sources of funds that will be coming through for that. Eight, three million of it's from the county, one point one will be federal funds, and then the other will be from various sources that we have dedicated specific for roads projects. So you'll see some of those next years as Dan gets the budget put together and the sources lined up. And that's, as I understand, a multi-year project. Be happy to answer any questions you might have about the budget opening or the process.
Okay, to the council?
Got a question on the golf course. When there's, like in this instance, the cost of good sold as revenue. Is that, so those funds come back into the city, but are we ever just roll those back into improvements?
So the, the budget openings, these are purely an authorization to, to spend money. And in the case, for example, of the golf course, and you'll see a couple of others in here too, like the arena budget adjustment. When they have additional, and then there's another hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Cultural Arts Foundation. When their initially budgeted operations exceed the cost of their adopted budget, we have to increase it. So let's say in the, in the case of the pro shop, it's a really good example. If they had a budget of a hundred thousand dollars to sell product and buy a hundred thousand dollars in product. As soon as they hit that hundred thousand dollars that they, and they sell everything out and they have to buy more throughout the year, we have to open the budget so they can buy more inventory. So the net does come back as revenue. Everything they sell comes back as revenue. And the, and the idea is that we have to still authorize them, the, the, give them the authorization to buy more and accommodate their projects. Did that answer your question? And the funds in that case do certainly stay in the golf course.
Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to our public hearings and we have application GB, GP one, twenty twenty-three. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. I will share my screen and give a review of this item. All right, so this, this application involves two or two considerations for the council. The first is a change to the general plan. It's for thirteen acres of property. You can see here at twelve fifty-one west, thirty-three hundred south. It's for the project known as the village at Rivers Edge. There are several parcels involved. So for the general plan, it currently is a mixed use designation that includes a high density residential. The request is to change that so that the mixed use designation would include what we call very high density residential. And it would also entail basically replacing the original development agreement that was done in the early two thousands with, with an amended development agreement. So you can see the property here in highlighted red. So you have within the development right now, there's two hundred and forty-four apartments. And the, the buildings that are closest to thirty-third south actually have ground floor commercial space within them. It's about twenty-one thousand square feet. Down in the, the southeast corner here, this property here is actually not a part. It's a, it's a condo building that was built as part of this original project, but is now under separate ownership. So the reason for the change is they're looking to make some revisions as well as some additions to the project. So all the buildings in white on this concept plan would basically remain the same with some, just some basically maintenance done on those buildings. And then the four buildings in blue that are labeled A one through A four. Those are the buildings that have ground floor commercial space within them. So the request is to convert that ground floor commercial space into more apartments. More specifically, it would be thirty apartments. And so it'd be a combination of studio, one and two bedroom units within those blue buildings. And so again, all these buildings are three stories. So the upper, the second, third floors of those buildings are already apartments. So this would make the first floor also apartments. Then in the area that's where you see those four blue buildings, those are, would be new buildings that would replace what are now wetlands. So if I go back to this image here, it's a little bit tough to see because of the vegetation, but there, there's a wetland area here. And that would be replaced with these rental townhome units as well as some additional amenities here in the south end. So these images here are just pictures of the existing buildings that have that ground floor commercial. And the next couple of images show how the applicant is proposing to remodel the buildings. So to take those storefronts and basically make them into units and include, include in that some patio space for each of those ground floor units. Here's just another view without the trees. You can see a little bit closer of what those would look like. Or plan, again, it's a mix of studio, one, two, one, two, and three bedroom units. And then these would be the renderings for the the townhome project. They want to build on the east side of the, of the development. So there'd be seventeen of these. So overall, there'd be an addition of forty-seven new units, so thirty apartments within the commercial space and then seventeen townhomes on the east side. So just elevations of those units. Now, this, this is something the planning commission asked for. This was their original townhome proposal, which they, they basically put on these what I call kind of faux gable roofs. They're really more just parapets and this was the next iteration. And then finally, this is what was the sort of the final proposal of the townhome units. Just a few birds I've used. These are, in my view, not particularly helpful. They're a little too far zoomed out. So I, I gotta, or have included in here a few other pictures, just again for reference. So here's one of the buildings with the ground floor commercial. The entrance into the development off of thirty-third south. View looking west on thirty-third and then also east on thirty-third. One of the buildings that we have residential. One of the existing apartment buildings. This is kind of on the north end of the wetlands area, looking to the southeast. Another view across the wetlands area. Another angle. This is the condo building. And again, this is not, not a part of the project, but just for reference, that's more in the southeast corner. The mobile home park that's just on the east side of twelfth west across the street. Looking north on twelfth west. And then again, another one of the ground, ground floor commercial buildings. And then this is the parking area that's more towards the east side of the property. The clubhouse that's existing. And that's the last slide. So just to wrap up, to explain the, the reason, the, the applicant provided two reasons primarily for the changes. So one is that for the commercial space, they've, they've tended to struggle a bit in terms of the, the tenants that have been there. There's been quite a bit of turnover in tenants. In fact, in your packet, you'll see there's, we provided a license history. So you can see from when the project opened, what businesses have been there, kind of come and gone. So not only they had turnover, but we've also even had some businesses there that have been really problematic for the city in terms of police calls. So that was another reason they provided. And also, when the project was first done in the early two thousands, I think at the time, the, the wetlands area was was meant to be a more of a, some, an amenity, if you will. But in their view, it's, it's not really been that. It's and, well, it's, it's attracted in some cases, just trash, right? They haven't, having to clean that up, but also have had issues with transients and, and people just kind of hiding out in the, the wetlands area. And so they see it as a benefit to be able to fill that space and, and put it to use. So those are a couple of reasons why they are wanting to make, make these changes. And with that, I'll, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, to the council? Go ahead.
I'm a little concerned with the wetlands area. I know how long it takes to get the Corps of Engineers to permit something like that. Are they aware of that timeframe and are they willing to spend the money to do it?
Yeah, absolutely. So they're, they have been in, in contact with the Corps and so they're, they're aware of that requirement and are working through that. In this situation, the area is fairly small. And so it's, it's maybe not as, as involved process when you're dealing with a smaller areas opposed to a much larger wetland. But, but yes, they are, they're aware of that.
Will there be any commercial left in the front part of the complex?
There would not be.
So does it still need to be a multi-use?
So the, the zoning is, that's in place is what was requested many years ago. It's not needed, but it, it wouldn't be an issue to leave it that zone, but it, but it's no, would no longer be necessary.
Saying that one of their former tenants really had some problems with plumbing and things like that in their commercial space. It's one of the reasons they're back in another building in the city.
I should point out to, in the development agreement, there is information about the number of units, finishes for the, for the insides, the new amenities they're proposing. So all that's spelled out in the develop or the new development agreement that would replace the original.
Two things, if you can speak to private streets. Versus, I think we're trying to get all public and then parking.
Sure. Here, so the, in this case, there, there would not be any private streets. So you have kind of three scenarios, if you, when it comes to, to streets, if you will, you have so public streets, the city owns. You have private streets, they're owned by an association. And then you have just what I call internal driveways in an apartment development. In that case, which would be the case we're talking about here, all the properties under one ownership. So you have one entity. And so it's not really a private street. In that case, it's, it's just part of the development. It's, it's an internal driveway. And so when we, when we put in the changes in the ordinance to prohibit private streets, it was to prohibit the association type private streets where you have joint ownership of a multiple owner. So in this case, it's all, it'd be all one owner.
So there won't be separate, oh, I see that. There won't be separate tax identity numbers for these townhomes. They'll just be by building.
That's correct, right? These are, these would be rental townhomes, correct?
Possible. And go ahead. And then parking?
Parking, yes. So in the, and I can pull this up if you'd like, but the in the planning commission minutes, we, we have our, the, the staff report and the staff does. And so there's actually, there, this project's actually over parked in terms of our standards today. And so even with the change, because commercial space tends to require more parking, they're actually going to have even more of a surplus, if you will, because commercial space requires more than residential space and parking.
On the townhome, will they have garage parking or will it all be street parking?
So they will have, each unit will have a two car garage. They also will meet the standard that we adopted not long ago by having parking in the driveway, plus they also have to have the point seven five in addition to, so basically it's like four, four point seven five per unit would, would be for the townhomes.
Okay, and they can meet that?
Yeah, that they actually exceed that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not really in favor of the townhomes being rented.
And in this case, the, I'm not, because of the, the private street prohibition, I'm not sure how they could do for sale townhomes in this situation, given just the layout of the existing development to put in a public street. I, I'm just, I don't think that would be possible in this situation.
Okay. So they have thirteen commercial people in there now with business license?
That, that sounds about right. I don't remember the exact number, but it, in the, in the table, it should show who's currently licensed. There are a few where they're.
Pending or.
Yeah, they're up for renewal, that's a type, type thing.
Yeah. So are they just thinking they'll just give them so much time to move out and then convert?
At this point, every, and talking to the owner, all the, the businesses are month to month at this point. So there, there are no more long-term leases in the, in the project.
Okay. Hey, any other questions?
Just one more. Is there any, do you know of any plans that we have on, for the corner piece?
At this point, I'm not aware of any plans that we have for that. I know it's the partial blue zone by the redevelopment agency, but at this point, I'm not aware of any, any pending things there.
So did they re- review this application? Did they have any concerns, the R D A?
I'm, I'm not aware of any, but yeah, they are aware of the project.
Okay.
During the spring runoff, I guess when things were. During the spring runoff, I guess when things were really going high, um, there was concern around this area about letting, did we have any?
I don't, we didn't, I see Dan shaking and said, no, we, we did not. One of the things they will have to account for is that, in addition to being a wetland, this is, uh, this handles some of their storm water. And so they'll have to figure out a way to address that, uh, which there are ways to, for, for example, underground storage would be a possibility. But that would be something the, their engineer will have to figure out.
Right. Thank you so much. We'll now go to ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two. And I'll turn the time over to Ms. Day from the Parks Department.
Good afternoon, Councilman and Mayor. Appreciate you being here and listening to, to this. This actually is a municipal code change in regards to tournament fees at both golf courses, um, at the ridge and also at Stonebridge Golf Clubs. So the tournament fees have not been changed for many years. Uh, staff did a great job and looked at what the market is right now at, uh, uh, quite a few golf courses in the area and found that we were quite low. But we also have an excellent product and have to turn tournaments away at times. So um, you can see the, the proposal, uh, down below. So the weekday rates would go up to sixty-five dollars per player. And this includes uh, the golf, the cart, and also some merchandise, uh, for prizes, that kind of thing from the club, uh, the pro shop, excuse me. Um, so that would be an increase from, uh, from the current rates. And then a change a little bit in how we would run a weekend tournament. So as you can, you know, probably, uh, understand the weekends are for, are prime tee times, they're prime times for golf. Um, and, uh, and quite a few golf courses have gone to this new structure where it would be a rental of the course rather than a tournament that would be set up during weekdays. So if they wanted to use, if they have up to forty, a hundred and forty-four players, as you can see here, so they would be using all eighteen holes. They would rent the course for the time allotment needed for that at eleven thousand dollars. And if they at Stonebridge wanted to use all twenty-seven holes because of the numbers that they would have, it would be fourteen thousand. And again, it would include the same elements as the per person rate. And what this prevents is, um, a golf tournament, uh, that they're booking all the tee times for a hundred and forty-four players and ninety, you know, show up. So, so this allows them to do that. But we're not losing revenue at the golf course that we would easily be able, uh, to, uh, reserve for our public golfers. So are there any questions?
Any question? Is there a difference, maybe a this more of an industry question, or it could be specific to our courses, but when, uh, say a nonprofit comes in with a fundraising tournament, are there differences on prices for maybe a nonprofit or versus?
There are not, not for tournaments, not for tournaments. And, and a little more information on Stonebridge as well, just so that you are aware. Uh, because of the high demand there, they actually only allow one weekend tournament, uh, per month. So either Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, just because of the high demand. What we don't want to do, and, and this may answer your question a little bit more. If we reduce the rates more than this, we're actually losing revenue from our public golfers because of what they will pay for a round of golf. And so we have to be cognizant and fiscally responsible, um, for that element of it. And so um, what we do for the nonprofits, really with all of them, but we'll give them different uh, meal options and things that won't cost as much. So they could turn around and charge, uh, what they need to for their fundraising efforts, but their cost won't be so high. Whereas with corporate tournament, then, um, you know, they may want kind of a, a full meal of something or another, but they can usually get away with charging their participants or their players a little bit higher rate on their end to be able to make up that difference. And our golf professionals do a fantastic job helping them set up for their sponsors and that kind of thing per hole too, which really helps a lot with, uh, the, uh, money that they can make back on those tournaments. So we provide a lot of services for them.
Okay, so no other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, now go to resolution twenty-three dash eighty-four and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Morris.
Thank you. This is a, a fairly routine. Every three years, we have to renew our, uh, our partnership with Salt Lake County, who is the lead agency for the home investment partnership. So, uh, we're recommending that we do so at this time.
Okay, any questions from the council?
So this is a interlocal agreement with the city rather than the housing authority. Is that pretty standard?
It is.
Could we run it through the housing authority or is that not?
Uh, it would, because we, because the housing authority is, is actually formed and run as a division of the city. You potentially could, uh, many years ago, we used to do that. But just due to accounting procedures and cost centers and that type of thing, um, it became easier for everyone, including the partnership to do it through the city. All the other, uh, cities in the, in the consortium run it through their cities, not a housing authority.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll go to our consent agenda and we have resolution twenty-three dash eighty-five. And I'm just gonna have, Mr. Powell, do you want to deal with this or do you want me to have Mr. Johnson come explain it?
Uh, ma'am, if Dan is more familiar with this particular one, maybe he ought to come up. I could run through it, but he, he may be actually closer to it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson.
This is a, a detention stormwater, uh, easement that exists on some property that's just west of fifty-six hundred west and south of fifty-four hundred south. A portion of that property lies on the, the property that's being developed by the, the car wash and there's a fast food restaurant that's being built there. And there's just not a need for this stormwater easement. So we're recommending that it be released on these, this parcels. The remainder, the, the, it's simply a release of a portion of the, of this easement. The, the remaining portion of the easement actually exists on the holiday oil parcel, which is outside of the city. So we're releasing what we can within our jurisdiction.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, thank you. All right. We'll now go to our communications and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Welch for our fraud risk assessment.
Thank you. Uh, this is the fraud risk assessment, which we present to the council every year. And we have the, uh, uh, direction by the state auditor to go through internally and assess and review the processes that we have to, uh, limit and to detect fraud, should it exist in the operations of the city. So there's a questionnaire. The first que- first question is, do we have an adequate separation of duties? And there are a number of real items that we go through. Uh, we've determined that we do have to the best of our ability and, and by policy have proper separation of duties. Uh, then we have, do we, um, do we, does the entity have a governing body adopted written policies in each of the following areas? And they go through such things as purchasing, uh, purchasing cards, technology, uh, cash receipting. We do have those policies in place for each one of those. We made it a, uh, a priority of ours to, um, to do everything we can to make sure that we comply with the things that are best practices for detecting fraud and making sure that we, we operate in a way that's equitable with public funds. Uh, number three is, does the entity have licenses cert, licensed and certified experts as part of their management team? We have a number of certified experts on our team and our budget staff as long as, as well as accounting and our treasury. Um, the next question, uh, are the elected officials required to annually, uh, and employees commit to, in writing to abide by the statement of ethical behavior? And I know you're all familiar with that because you see it every year. Um, we have a specific training for each of the board members and the council members, which you also have completed. Thank you very much. Um, we also ask for continuing education of our professionals, uh, which we're in compliance with at least, at least forty hours of training each year to make sure that we're up on the laws and the the compliance requirements of both the state and the federal, um, regulatory agencies. Uh, do we have a fraud hotline? Yes, we do. It's on our website. Uh, does the entity have a formal internal audit function? We put down that we do have mitigating controls there. We do have, um, an internal audit function that's actually assigned to one of our accountants. And we regularly go through and have him address the things that are not taken care of by our regular accountants. We do internal audits with the cash handling of each of our entities and we'll show up, uh, at them at a random time and we'll go through their tills and make sure they're handling things properly. We'll also audit things like, uh, purchasing cards, things like um, the, um, requisition process to make sure that everybody's receiving the proper oversight that they should as we make purchases. Uh, also, do we have a, a formal im, uh, audit committee, which we do, and some of you are members of that audit committee? Um, this fraud risk assessment will probably be conducted a little bit differently next year in an effort to make the fraud, the, uh, audit committee, uh, a little bit more responsible and more integrated with this process. We'll be presenting this assessment to them first, uh, because this is relatively new. I think this is the third year that we present it to you. Next year, we'll be going through this with the audit committee and then it will come to the city council. Once we do that, uh, then the audit, this audit questionnaire is certified by the chief administrative officer and the chief finance officer, and we send that into the state auditor that we have provided to you.
Hey, thank you. Um, did we end up with the most amount of points we could have gotten?
Yes.
Eighty-five at the top?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yep.
And are there any questions from the council concerning this? Nope. Okay, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to our residential occupation or ordinance discussion. I had something else in my brain. Mr. Plaster.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor. This is an item that, uh, actually was brought up at our last study meeting. Uh, and there were actually a couple of questions that came up from, I believe, Councilman, uh, Fatisi Mano and Councilman Hune. And there's a little bit of overlap. So we put this together in, in one, one discussion. So wanted to hit on four, four topics as it relates to rental housing or rental homes specifically. So first of all, a couple of definitions in our ordinance, I think they'll get at some of the issues that were raised. Uh, talk about some legal scenarios and some illegal scenarios. And then also I believe this is, uh, uh, Councilman Fatisi Mano's question about how do we, or what means do we have to enforce when there are illegal situations? So first of all, a couple of definitions. And so when it comes to boarding homes, uh, and try not to put you to sleep here, but that these, I think these are important. So boarding home means a dwelling unit or portion thereof, where in a room or rooms are rented under two or more separate written or, or rental agreements, leases or subleases or combination thereof, whether or not the owner, agent, or rental manager resides within the dwelling unit. So the key here is two or more leases, okay? And also the, the fact that it refers to renting a room or individual rooms plural. And so we have, uh, had issues where we've had to, um, try to enforce, and I'll bring up a couple of examples. Where we have a, a home that's purchased by an investor and they're renting out individual rooms under separate leases, okay? The next one, I think this gets a Councilman Hughes' question about just what is considered a rental unit, okay? And this is in our business licensing code. It says, uh, it means any individual dwelling unit that is rented, leased, subleased, loaned, let, or hired out or used or occupied as a home or residence by any individual or entity other than the owner. It's that last part that's the, that's kind of the key of that definition is if anyone other than the owner is, is the occupant, then at that point, it's considered a rental. Now, if the owner's there with someone else, that's not a rental. But if it's, if the owner's not there, then by definition, it's considered a rental.
So if it's occupied by anybody, but the owner's not there, then it's a rental.
By, by definition, correct.
That's whether they pay for it or not, even if they're just let live there.
Exactly, exactly.
Interesting.
Yeah. Steve, so how we can fix this problem, Steve? Here, mom and dad, one daughter or son live nearby, you know, you do and we do here too. Uh, in case in the future, we get an O and they can step in and help us out, you know what I'm saying? Nearby and they can take care here and there. So if mom and dad give that house to son or daughter take over, um, live nearby adjacent to it, we would love to do that, you know, but, uh, son or daughter, they have to pay the rent, I mean, they have to, we have to pay the license for, for doing that.
For rental.
If for the rental, but evenly our son or our daughter to do, to live nearby us.
Right. No, I understand. And we, and this is something I think the council's discussed about potentially amending the definition, which certainly we could do. It, the only challenge from, from staff's perspective is just on the enforcement side, right? It's someone, you know, how, how do you determine who actually is family? Like that gets really thorny to try to figure out who's actually family. So that's, I, I think it's, it's more of an administrative challenge really, uh, if we were to change it. So. But certainly because
How much is the, the business license fee for this?
I believe for a rental, I want to say it's, uh, I, I, I probably should double check this, but I want to say thirty-five dollars, but I, I can
Thirty-five dollars a year?
Correct, but
Do you have to pay the one fifty, the one ten bakes?
There may be, and you know, I, I have to, I have to double check that. I'm not sure. I, I think there may be a, a base fee that's paid once, but again, I can, I can confirm that and get like numbers on the rental fees.
I think it's over a hundred for the first.
Well, I think every year you have to buy it and it's a hundred or a hundred and ten for the base fee. And then you have your add-ons after that. So it can go up to five hundred dollars or, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars. Okay.
So those are the, the definitions. And again, if, uh, the council would like, certainly we can change it. I just would raise that issue again. It just becomes just on the administrative side of, uh, enforcing that.
You have to do a DNA to see if they're family or not.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, so I can see leaving it. Cause it would be almost impossible to figure that part out.
And how far back do you go?
Yes.
Cause we're all related.
Yeah.
To go far enough best.
My second cousin.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, we thought it'd be helpful too, to talk about, um, some scenarios. So we, uh, this, this is actually something we put together a couple of years ago where council had asked about similar, had similar questions. And so we put together a memo and this is straight from that memo. So we put together four scenarios that would be considered legal rental scenarios and a couple of illegal. So the first is you have the entire house that's rented to a single household, uh, it's, and it's a long-term lease, like six months or a year lease, okay? So that, that's considered legal and they would need a license. The owner would need a license. The second would be a short-term rental. So in our code right now, we don't differentiate between a long or a short-term rental. Now, there are some cities that do, but we don't. So if it's, if the entire house is rented out, short-term, just need a license and same scenario, it's, that's legal. Um, under the, the third one here, you have uh, so the entire home is, uh, occupied, insured as, as one unit by the owner and one or more tenants. So for example, like a, let's say that the owner has a roommate, right? In that case, the owner does live there, but they're just renting out, um, say, a, a room to someone that's staying there with them. That, that's okay.
Is there a limit to how many they can have?
So because we have that, uh, the, the one lease part, it's just the, the one lease. It doesn't, we don't like differentiate how many people. It's just the one lease issue.
What if they have four leases?
So you can only, the, the boarding house ordinance gets into, if you, if you have two or more, it's considered a boarding house.
Okay.
And then in that third scenario, we have not required a license because the owner is there, okay? The fourth is, and this is something that's relatively new, uh, is a a legal, we call accessory dwelling unit or ADU. So you may recall a couple of years ago, the state actually required us to allow for ADUs in our code. So as long as someone gets gets a permit and puts in a legitimate accessory dwelling unit, like for example, a basement apartment, they can get a license to rent that out. And again, that's that's something the state required us to do. Now, a couple of scenarios that are not legal. So the first is that you have a portion of the home is rented uh to one or more tenants as a unit. And then you have the rest of the house rented out to another group as uh under a separate uh lease. And and technically, really there's, there's two issues with this first one. The first is you can't have two units in a single-family home, again, unless it's a legal accessory dwelling unit, okay? But then also you can't have two leases, right? And then the the last one here, scenario six is you have individual leases for each room in a house, right? And we have run into this scenario. So that really gets up the boarding home issue. Okay? So again, hopefully that helps uh just differentiate how we handle things, just in terms of how the code's crafted.
Now, this is the. Sorry, and it just seems like we have both those two scenarios are where we have the biggest concerns. Yeah. How do we fix that?
Well.
Because they're still happening.
Absolutely. In fact, I'd say scenario five is probably the most common where you have essentially someone's, you know, converted their basement into an apartment and they never got a permit. They don't have a license, right? Like they, that's pretty common.
But six is probably the most um harmful for the neighborhood.
Correct, I agree.
Because you've got seven rooms that are all individually leased, which means you have at least seven cars out on the street. And that's what people see. They they may not see the eight people coming in and out as often, but they they definitely feel the eight or nine cars that are on the road.
Sure, and some of the the exterior things like parking. Um, so the next slide I'll talk about enforcement before I get to that. There are some just exterior things where people are parking on the lawn or whatever that we can, and that's just more normal code enforcement things. When it comes to the heart of the issue of, okay, you're using it as boarding home, that that gets a little more tricky and I'll I'll give some examples here. So really, the the biggest challenge, and we've, we've uh taken on some of these i- is coming up with evidence, okay? And what I mean by that is evidence that they actually are running it as a boarding home, or it's it's a duplex when it should just be a house. So one we've used recently would be online ads. So let me give you a a couple of examples. So one, we're we're actually in the middle of right now with enforcement. Uh, was someone actually had a, you know, a Facebook posting where they said, I rent out by the room. So we, you know, print, print that and then throw that in the case and said, you said in this online online ad that you're renting out by the room. You can't do that, right? We're not always that lucky, but that does happen on occasion. Another one we had where someone had uh recently sold a house and in in the listing, there were pictures of the basement apartment that was never like permitted or anything else. And it was all, and it was even in text, like this is a basement apartment. So again, sometimes we get lucky and we find like evidence like that. The next one is if we see that work's being done and there's no permit. So that one is again, a bit more challenging because if they're doing it just inside, a lot of times we won't know. But if, let's say they're putting in a a walkout basement or they're adding another door and and someone says, hey, we don't think they have a permit. If we can get inside to inspect because they they're asking for a permit, then a lot of times that helps us discover these things sort of after the fact. Uh, the third one, testimony from tenants. This is one where we had one particular landlord who had a couple of or several properties where they were renting out by the room. And so we actually, and we had, these are some problem properties for the city, right? We had police calls. It was really a problem. So in this case, uh, actually, uh, the police department actually had officers like on on camera having tenants saying, yes, I pay my, I pay my landlord directly and my roommate over here in the other room pays, right? So they basically admitted that it was a boarding house as part of that. Again, that's not as common, which uh but in in this particular case, these are similarly problem properties for the city. Uh, on occasion, we'll have an appraisal that will say, um, we'll see an appraisal and it will actually say there's a basement apartment. There's been work done and we're like, hmm, there's no permit for that, right? So that's another source or even county records. On occasion, the county will show that something's been changed and they they'll have that reflected for tax purposes, but then they never got a permit for that. And this next one I know is a bit, has been a bit controversial as of late, but because of that ownership issue, right? If if the owner doesn't live there. So the county keeps track for tax purposes, who owns the property and what their mailing address is. So if the property owner's mailing address does not match the property address, that's a pretty good indicator that that they don't live there. Now, there are exceptions like a P O box and things like that, but for the most part, if the owner doesn't uh have their tax notice go to the house, then they they probably don't live there. Um, a couple more here. So one of the things we do on the business license application is we have a questionnaire. And in that, we just straight up ask them, are you renting out by the room? Have you, are you renting out the basement separate from the upstairs? And we, we ask some, for lack of a better word, some incriminating or potentially incriminating questions. So as long as they're honest on their application, if they apply for a business license and they're honest, we'll say, hey, you can't do that. Here's what you can do. And we make some corrections that way, okay? So the end, second to last one, interior building inspection for related or unrelated work. So again, if someone's applying for a building permit to finish their basement and we see that they're doing things that would make it a, you know, they're sealing off the upstairs from the downstairs, let's say. Um, then that's again where we can say, hey, you're you're, that's not something you can do in this particular location because it's single-family.
But it, but in scenario four, as long as the owner's living there, they could do that?
So incorrect. So if if they have, if they're applying for a legitimate accessory dwelling unit, then yes, they can do that. Yes.
And the stairs can be locked door at the top, so the people in the basement can access the top level, right?
So it, so one of the things that's in state code is w- we can't actually require that though, that that there be accessible. Again, if it's a, if it's an accessory dwelling unit, they're not required to be able to get to any part of the house. They can just get like, say, go out through a a basement exit or, you know, a yeah, a walkout, for example.
Well, or even the front door, one goes down to this apartment, one goes up to where the resident lives.
If if it's a, and and there are there are certain building code considerations, but if it's a legitimate accessory dwelling unit, then yes, they can have their own separate entrance. And last one here is whenever someone applies for a business license, uh, we do a drive-by inspection. And so some tech cases, again, this is not as common. If someone's put up two mailboxes or they have like you know, a second door or something that's like, like hmm, something doesn't quite seem right. Another one that tipped us off recently, no joke. We, uh, Public Works notified us that someone was asking for five garbage cans at a residence room. Pretty sure that's not a single uh living arrangement with five garbage cans, right? So it turns out they, they also had an online app where they're renting out by the room. So in that case, we had two, two triggers. So um, again, these are the some of the ones we've used in the past to try to enforce these things, but as you can see, not um a lot of times people are careful to cover their tracks. And so there there's not always a smoking gun, so to speak, to to go after these, but um, but that's, that's how we've historically done enforcement. So any questions I can answer?
But you want to go back to the one I brought up early about the daughter or son. Is that there a way we can do, uh, I think the license is not a matter, but the matter is we let our son or our daughter to live nearby us and try to take care of us in the future. And we have to get a license to do that because we, in case, I'm I'm sorry, um, is that there the way we can do maybe present certificate, birthday certificate, but certificate to the uh, the office and getting get that without license? Or no?
So what I, what I would suggest, and it, and it truly just, it comes down to sort of enforcement policy. For the, for most of the time in the city, we're not going after someone that um doesn't have a license unless there's some other problem, right? So for example, you know, I mentioned earlier that we had a landlord who had several properties where the the police were out there quite a bit. And as we did some digging, there's they have, you know, um, outside storage, there's the property's not maintained. They've done permit or they've done additions without permits. And and so there were, there were a number of issues with the the private, the properties. And so we use that. I know there's been a a, on a few occasions where the city's done some more proactive enforcement. Where we've, again, if if the owner isn't living there, you know, based on uh their mailing address. Um, but we can, for the most part, over since I've been here, the the enforcement when it comes to illegal rentals is is generally been if there's been some other problem that's happening, that's that's really triggered enforcement. And so I think that's, that's one way to address that is if, if the, let's say, parents of, you know, are just letting their kids stay there. We we never have any other issues. The property's maintained. It's, we just don't do enforcement because there aren't any other problems. But if there are problems, then again, as part of that, as we do our investigation, we say, oh, by the way, hey, we don't have a license and you've got these other issues too, right? So that, um, at least that's just one, one suggestion there is, is uh just continuing to do it more based on if there's other problems. Um, but uh, just because from an administrative standpoint, trying to track family, I think would be pretty challenging, just in my, in my view.
So the case, uh, I I presented to you last time, the individual, you know, you and I worked on that case. So um is that that his son has a problem with the local police officer?
I'm not aware of any issues that way. Yeah, so we, we have, so as I mentioned, we have done uh instances. And again, these have been pretty rare, but we'll um, we'll send out our letter saying, hey, looks like you're, um, this is a rental property because you don't, your mailing address doesn't match the property address. Uh, and that's been more proactive efforts, right? But again, those have been pretty rare over the city's history. So we can just simply do more of the um instead of doing that approach, just again, have it be based more on if there's other issues that come up.
You keep a list of concerned houses that that may have it may, you know, possible boarding houses that we could keep an eye on, look for evidence.
So boarding houses specifically, no, uh, as we, uh, usually how we're made aware of these because there is a problem, right? We, um, the, the property's just falling into disrepair. We get complaints and as we look into it, we're like, oh, there's, this is this is going on. And so we include that in the case. Uh, as far as just um rental properties generally, so we have what we call our neighborhood health audit. Then we provide the council each year. And as part of that, we we identify and it's more of a snapshot in time of, okay, as of the, this time of the year, we had this many uh rental properties just based on, again, matching the property address versus the owner address. So we do each year kind of look at that and see how we're um, how we're doing, not only just as a city as a whole. Um, which generally were around eleven or twelve percent of the of the homes in the city are rentals. But we also look at by neighborhoods. You'll see some neighborhoods have a higher percentage of rentals than others. And so that's just one of the sort of things we measure in in different neighborhoods.
I just, and I think every neighborhood has a boarding house. Because everybody I talked to has one in their neighborhood. So I just wonder if we ought to put those on, you know, keep those on a short list so that we can look for evidence to crack down on that a little bit more. Instead of just waiting for problems to happen, because I've got two in my neighborhood. And if the cars weren't there, you would drive by and and not know there was any issue. But then in the evenings, when all the cars show up, well, man, somebody's having a party. Well, they're not. They're they're just living in a boarding house, so. I don't know.
Now, we just, right now, we don't have a a systematic way to identify those. So right now, again, because we have rentals generally, we have information we get from the county that shows, you know, for every property, the the address, the property owner and the property owner's mailing address. So we can like very quickly make that comparison and identify those. The boarding houses, we don't have a similar way to, it's it's more based on, you know, we, a complaint or um, or something else that tips us off. Uh, we just, at at least off the cuff, I can't think of a systematic way of identifying boarding houses.
So that job basically is a co-enforcement, I can't clear up that job or up with its officer.
In terms of enforcement?
Yeah.
Or finding the problem?
It really depends on the situation. So um sometimes we um will, this will come up as part of a business license application. So for example, so we have in our uh office in community development, uh Daniel Bush, who does all the license reviews for zoning compliance. And so if in that review, he finds that there's an issue that way, then he actually can do enforcement. Um, now, if it's something where there's a, um, you know, there's a lot of vehicles parked on the grass and the property's falling to disrepair, that's probably going to come through more code enforcement. So it really kind of depends on uh how we find out about the situation, who sort of takes the lead on on enforcement.
The the one that Scott, he mentioned about at night, you know, people parking on the street. So that I mean, co-enforcement not working at night. And it's hard for a police officer to patrol, what kind of find out about it. So how would he figure out to enforce that?
Right. So, so in that case, if they're parking on the street, so that's, that's actually, it would be the police department, the the parking onsite, if it's, you know, they're parking in the grass or they're not parking on an appropriate surface, that would be code enforcement in that situation. So if someone just has a lot of cars that are parked on the street, that that in and of itself generally wouldn't tip us off to this is maybe a boarding house situation. I should point out another scenario we had just recently, and again, this just sort of illustrates, kind of depends on the situation. We had a a complaint about an unsafe living condition, which would be something our building inspection uh department will look at. And as we did some digging, we found that they had done a series of additions and and new buildings on this lot without any permits. And they also had an online ad and right, so there's just a lot of issues. And so in that case, because it started as a building code complaint, building code or building enforcement starting it, but we're including in that the boarding home issue. So again, I I, not to confuse the issue, but I think it just really depends on how uh how the issue or excuse me, how the complaint comes in and who's sort of leading that initial effort.
Hey, any other questions?
What uh what are the enforcement results? I mean, if someone said, we find out they're, they're running a boarding house, what do we do about it?
So what we've done so far, I know these are, these are some more challenging ones. Uh, we've generally gone gone the um, well, if if we haven't had issues with the property in the past, we start with the courtesy notice, just kind of make them aware. And then if we don't get compliance, then a a notice of violation. Uh, we've also done in one situation where there were, uh, there were prior uh code enforcement cases, we just did administrative citation, meaning they just got a ticket. So in that case, it's like, you already know this is a problem. Where uh you're getting a ticket. So that, those are the the methods we've done. We have not tried to actually go in and try to evict people or anything like that. We've really tried to work with the landlord to get compliance that way.
Are we working hard on this matter? We really get into this thing or we just go by and if we see something and we just saw a problem, how how, I'll see what you're doing right now, but that.
But um, it seems just, this is just uh my, my observation. It seems like there's been more of this recently in the last few years than than in in past memory. Um, and I can think of right now several that were at at various stages of enforcement on particularly boarding houses. Um, they are, they tend to be pretty time-consuming in terms of. They are, they tend to be pretty time consuming in terms of, because again. In every case that I can think of, that's not the only issue, right? There are other issues going on, and so they involve. Not just one particular division or department, it often spans like multiple, right? So there's there's coordination that's needed on these. So I'd say we are addressing these as we become aware of them, but there. It's quite a bit more time consuming than just saying, hey, you've got an inoperable vehicle or or weeds that need to be cut.
Given that. We don't have a proactive systematic way to identify potential boarding homes, can. Can we hear a little bit about? How we can reassure neighbors that we at least have a formal system of addressing their reports when they do call in with a suspicion. That someone's running a boarding house.
Jake, I can speak somewhat to that. So we actually do have a pretty proact, it's not a systematic approach like Steve is referring to, and he's correct in that, but we have a. Proactive effort between police department and. Code enforcement and also building department in which if if complaints come up in the way that Steve described them. And he's right, they come up in a lot of different ways, whether it's parking, whether it's criminal issues, whether it's complaints, whatever it might be. This group meets together in a coordination meeting once a month, we talk specifically about particular addresses or problem landlords. And we have taken proactive steps to resolve those situations and and we do that on a monthly basis. I personally attend that, so I see that, I know what addresses are being looked at and which properties are a problem. And problem being defined, of course, is from the the complaint standpoint, like Steve said, yeah, we're not driving around and. Trying to determine, I'm sure there would be many more houses to do that than we have the capacity and resource to to figure out. But to your specific question, if somebody makes a complaint, asks us about it, especially through code or C O P more often than building. Than the the building department, but that is brought to that meeting, those complaints are, and then we examine them there and determine what are the best steps to take. To resolve the situation.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I'm just wondering, and only because. I I get the sensitivity of this, we're not allowed to walk up to somebody's house, knock on the door. And accuse them of, you know, running a boarding house, just because we have multiple cars or we see a lot of people coming in and out. And it is a very strict definition, as we've seen, in terms of what constitutes a boarding house, but I'm wondering if. Just in terms of reassuring residents, if if someone did call in. And it was, and they just happened to have met the week before, and so it's going to be another three or four weeks before they even. Meet to address that. Not sure that folks would see that as a timely response, I guess that's kind of what I'm asking, is there something?
Sure, right, and. Yeah, no matter how fast they did meet, they probably might not see that as a timely response, because even in the case where we do have a boarding house situation. It can take weeks and months to resolve that, even in the most egregious situation, I'm thinking. Off the top of my head, as we're talking about this problem, for example, we've had a property owner here in the city over the last year or so that kind of popped up. And had been assembling properties here in in West Valley and in other cities, we found out throughout the the county. And so we started pursuing those addresses, both individually and collectively, working between the C O P officers. And the and the code officers finding out, okay, each situation was a little bit different in terms of who the renters were. What exactly the circumstances were that was going on. This landlord happened to be an out of town owner, as they often are, so you got to track him down, then you got to give them their due process, right? So I mean, these these situations will always take a long time to resolve. Yeah, in any event, so maybe another way I can think of in which. Complaints come through that we can get addressed and do address them. If there's somebody that wants to to hear on that, is we have either the C O P officer who maybe. Originally heard the complaint or some other city contact that got the complaint, actually just maintain contact with that person.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate and and favorable, right, to say, even if we're not going to formally. Assess this as a formal group, whatever that systematic way is. For another couple of weeks, we did send someone out to go check it out, or we have initiated some kind of a, you know, preliminary response to it.
Yep.
Love it, yeah.
Hey, thank you, was there anyone else add any questions?
If a citizen has a complaint, should they contact code enforcement or should? Who who do they contact? I think that's probably the biggest thing is.
Yeah, it depends on what the complaint is, sometimes the complaints are code related, sometimes they're building related, sometimes they're crime related. So we can get those from. Any of those venues.
If it's just, if it's just there's a boarding house, somebody, you know, my next door neighbors are running a boarding house, there's. You know. Twenty people living in this house, what can the city do about it?
Yeah, probably the best area to go through that is Steve's office, frankly. Because, yeah, the code guys can't do anything. In terms of going up to the door, knocking, asking, that sort of thing, that's not their venue, Steve's. Office can forward that complaint to either of those other entities. If they're appropriate, but I would say to your specific question, yeah, it's probably C E D or C D.
John would be, it seems that that's not enough evidence, that. You know, I I talked to my neighbor who lives in a boarding house. Is that enough? Evidence to to do anything about it?
Well, we can, we can do some initial research, like see if there's an online ad. Also, we could see, hey, do they have a rental business license, for example, right? So there there are some initial things we can do that are. Don't take a lot of time to just see if there's anything there, if they don't already have some like specific things like. Hey, I think they did some work without a permit or, you know, they've got ten cars parked in the in the grass, those. There are some sort of lower hanging fruit we can look at initially.
Hey, any other comments? Right, thank you. All right, the council calendar. Yes, we had one issue, but we'll get corrected. Was there any other concerns? Seeing none, we'll go to potential future agenda items. Okay.
Since our city manager has announced that he's retiring at the beginning of the year. Think that we should have a plan in place for replacing him. And and we should be talking about this right now, that. We should ask. Our H R department to present a plan and 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 talk about it.
Okay.
Very soon, that's what I think.
I I agree with you, he has a point. We need time, we need time to find our C D manager, so. Right, right now, it's a good time to talk about.
Okay.
Agree.
Great. John, I brought back in a communication item?
Yes.
Everybody's good with that? Got that one?
They need to have outlined steps and time limits too, just. You don't just wait until. X minus one is hell, we need to interview somebody.
Right, well, I think H R will have a set schedule already in mind, yeah, I think they know what they need to do. Do you want to check with them and see how much lead time they need to be able to present that? Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Wayne, thanks for the. The bond debt schedule that you emailed us. Can we get that attached to the minutes of the meeting? So that we can have those ready available, and then also. It said this is the bond debt schedule, I just wondered if there's other debt that's not bond debt that we would want to know about.
Yeah, that's a good question, for example, we were kind of. Hesitating deciding if we should put the hotel on there, since that's paid for by another entity that. At actually has ownership of of it, we did include that, just because it's a large piece and and shows up in our financial statements. Other debt that we did not include would be small stuff like leases of equipment, you know, that sort of thing. But that would be the only other piece of debt that I can think of that that I'd be aware of. Anything that was infrastructure related and bonded for debt wise was included.
To go along with that way, no wondering if. So you're just adding up the amounts and the totals, especially when you include. Remaining interest payments. And. I'm wondering if you could present to us. Standards that as far as total debt to. A city's total revenue. If there are standards or if there's practices that are in place that we can try and judge that off of, because. I mean, when you look at our total revenue, we're at right around a hundred million, and I added up. Two hundred and forty one million with principal and remaining interest, which is something like that.
Yeah, in fact, I can give you a synopsis, in fact, I did provide this back a few weeks ago, just from an outside observer's. Assessment, I can't, who who was it, Jim Fitch that did that last bond rating?
Yes, it was.
So they assess this as having a moderate debt level. For our overall financial picture, picture assets, that sort of thing. So yes, for sure, there are standards, comparisons for making assessments like that, I can. Say also that across the tenure of the city, at least for the last twenty plus years. Debt levels compared to. Overall finances, whether it's the general fund or whether it's general fund combining all the other. Basically, have really generally stayed pretty steady, possibly even dropped off a little bit, at one point in the council's. History, their discussion and desire was to not see debt exceed a particular level. And if I remember right, that was around tenish years ago. And conversation at that time was that it would actually bump above that level they said at the time, and then was going to. Be dropping below that again, which I believe it did, and it stayed rather steady, but. Specifically to your question, for sure, there are standards out there that are compared against, bond rating agencies look at that for us all the time. And I'm sure we can get you guys, whatever those definitions are.
Will, you asked about the payment payment each month for house tenant, yeah, is that right?
Well, I added up remaining balance plus future interest payments. The total not up to.
Oh, Wayne, can you. Provide us maybe monthly payment for the total. The bond here we we have here.
I'm I'm sorry, Tom, I didn't understand that, what?
Maybe like to provide a numbers. The monthly payment we have to pay for all this outstanding debt.
Oh, monthly payment?
Annual would probably be better.
That good, Scott say annual bit better.
Yeah, that's what we do, we we pay by. Almost all of these bond debt services are paid once a year, sometimes they're paid twice a year, but. Yeah.
Like to thinking about that mortgage, I didn't know, okay.
So did you want a schedule of what those payments are?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I would love to see that.
I think, isn't the schedule provided there, Jim? Maybe it doesn't do.
Yes, they're they're attached to that schedule, the organization for every every debt.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's multiple pages.
Right.
We just have a PDF, so if you could just. Twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four and add them up, so they kind of follow up, so we know what the annual debt service is.
Yeah, because what's the PDF, we can't do totals or anything?
Well, we could, we just have to, we have to do the hard work.
Yeah. And just plug it in and say, that's some.
Right, sorry.
No, you're fine.
You also included, which I appreciate, the which debt is callable and which ones. Have an early payoff date. So as, and I only have my my household budget to compare, so when I pay off debt, I roll that payment into. More debt, so I can pay off those debts, can you can you do that here, or if it's not callable? Can you not apply additional payments to that? Larger debt?
If it's not callable, you can't do it in that way, you can do, and there are other ways to approach that, for example. We will sometimes what we call defees some debt service by. One method of doing that is going out and securing further debt, and then using the proceeds from that debt to pay down the other debt. Usually you only do that if there's some kind of interest rate savings to be gained, but there can be other reasons to do that as well. But if that's non callable, then yes, Will, to your to your point, you can't pay it off faster, if it is callable, then you can do that.
And did you provide rates on these by chance?
See rates?
I can't remember if the rates were actually on the schedule or not.
The rates, the rates were not, if I may, Wayne, and that's they actually vary based on, when these bonds are sold, they're sold on an annual bond. So each year is a little bit different, and they have a coupon rate. But there is a an average rate for them, which can be identified. There's an average rate for each of those debts issues.
I think the average rate would be helpful, at least to see. How they each compare, and I know rates have. Great, back in the day.
Okay, so you're asking to that be added and then re, okay, and then resubmitted? Okay.
Okay.
One of those, the physical copy that you said. You were Scott, I can't remember.
I don't care about physical copy, I just wanted to attach to the minutes so the public has access to it.
So do you want them in a different form, or you're good with PDF?
As long as we have the, I think Tom wants the annual totals.
Okay.
Debt service totals and Will wants interest rates, I think if we have that, we'll go to PDF, just.
Okay.
If we get the information we want, it's fine.
And rates. Okay. Hey, seeing no other, is was there any other potential future agenda items? Nicole has one, okay, go ahead.
A month ago, we had a resident to. Had a hobby of woodworking in his garage and and. And wanted a business license, but it wasn't allowed, and we have a limit of of two thousand dollars a year. If if they make less than that, then they don't need a business license. The last time that was raised to two thousand was was about thirty years ago. And I think we should raise it again based on inflation. To to four thousand dollars.
So if they don't have a, if they if they have a hobby business. And they're making less than four thousand a year with this hobby, they don't need a business license. I think you could even increase it more than that.
Yeah. And they give me ten thousand.
So I'm thinking with, maybe have a recommendation from staff, just because I see some things. Well, I guess if they're doing it legally, it'll be fine, it's just the illegal ones and the. Well, I guess if they're doing it legally, it'll be fine, it's just the illegal ones and the.
Yeah.
Twenty-six yard sales and. All the different things you can sell out of your house and not get over that and not have to have a building permit, but ten thousand would still have a lot of traffic in your neighborhood. And that's our thing, it's neighborhood business licenses, correct? And that's where your impact is. So if you're selling ten thousand, it depends on what you're selling. But you could have ten customers a year, or you could have ten thousand customers a year. So that's where I would caution and have staff give us a recommendation of what they foresee as being issues in the future, changing that. Would you be good with that?
I, I think we should talk about it at least.
Okay. So can we have a member of staff put that together? Yes, okay. All right, so we'll expect that in the next two weeks. Business license. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Kamen?
Uh, the mayor met with the children's center, who will be taking over half of the Granger Medical Center. Um, and they were hoping to come and just present to council in August, just wanted to make sure council was.
The new Granger Medical or the old?
The old, sorry, I should have specified the old Granger Medical Building.
Children's Center, they do really good work with um, youth and mental health. If they have a, a loss or just different things in their life from infants to teenagers. And it's a really impactful, they used to be in Salt Lake. Um, they're a nonprofit, they're not associated with any government entity, but. They're just a NGO that's going to take over and do, I think she said an eighteen million dollar improvement at the old Granger Medical. And she's only take, they're only taking over half. They're gonna have the ribbon cutting September twenty-fifth.
September twenty-fifth.
Yeah, and so she just, I just thought it'd be. Good for them to come and introduce themselves to the council, get more information, so if you want to go to the ribbon cutting or let your neighbors and friends know about it. So, anybody would be for that?
Sounds good to me.
Yep. They have flyer or something that can bring it to us.
Possibly, yeah, I can ask her. Okay, so we have four that say that's fine?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good on that one.
And I'll reach out for it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and if you'll ask her if she has a handout for the week, okay. Okay, is that the end of our future agenda items? Council report? Okay, um, was there anything on the strategic discussion list that anybody wanted to bring up tonight? Okay, we'll move on to our review of the special municipal building authority meeting and turn the time over to Mr. Welch.
Mayor, this is the um, budget opening for the building authority to take into account the um. Uh, transfer, let me take a look here, I'm sorry. Of funds from the general fund to the um, cultural center to, this is actually to be in compliance with state auditor requirement from an audit finding. So last year, the um, fund balance for the cultural center was actually short. And because of that shortness, we are required to make a general fund transfer, so that's what this is.
So it was short at the end of last year, what we're making the.
It's a.
Over there this year?
We've had a, we've had an accumulation operations shortfall for the last couple of years as the um. Uh, foundation and the theater started operations, so it's accumulated. But the state auditor requires us to take five percent of the total revenue of the entity that has the negative fund balance. Make a transfer into that to start eating away at that till it starts to become positive, so, um, yes, sir.
Sorry, I was kind of not paying attention for a sec, we're talking about the building authority budget opening.
Building authority.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, all you're talking about is the. Construction funds for the justice court and the uh, issuance fees, the five point five million and the ten million, I believe. Or you might be looking at the rental bond payment.
My apologies, yes.
Into fitness center.
Yep, that is correct, this is the budget opening for the uh, debt service payment in the building authority, I got it mixed up. For the uh, for the debt service payment that was um, that comes with the new bonds that were issued this last year.
Okay, so since I have that last explanation in my head, will you start over on this one?
Yes.
I'm gonna do a clear white.
My apologies, I didn't, yeah. Okay, okay, sure, yeah, there, there are actually two items that are on this budget opening. Um, one was a, because the um. Uh, fitness center actually has funds that are being, the first one is fitness center transfer from the repair and replacement fund. This is for indoor pool motors, that's sixty thousand dollars, and because it's coming from the repair and replacement fund held in the building authority. To pay for the facility improvements, that's what that one is. The other one is the justice court bond payment, which we talked about in the previous budget opening, so sorry, I conclude, confuse the issue.
So the justice court bond payment will be three hundred and eighty thousand?
That's correct, those were the additional improvements. And the, the reason it's in the building authority is because when we did the bonded debt, it was a building authority bond.
Okay, so the building authority will make all bond payments?
That is correct.
And this is the first bond payment?
Correct, and there's a transfer from the general fund to the building authority, and that was in the previous budget opening.
Okay. And then the transfer to the fitness center is just to take care of their pool motors.
That is correct, and we do have money that we put in the repair and replacement fund each year, and it's used for repair and replacement.
And every year it's used out of the building authority for repair and maintenance, so when we do new air conditioning and.
Um, it depends on the actual operations, some entities do have repair and replacement funds, so some do not.
I'm just talking to fitness center.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, everything comes out of that?
Excuse me, mayor, yeah, no, everything does not come out of that, um, because we have pretty limited funds in the repair and replacement. Fund, there are particular repairs that get done from that out of there, or sometimes there are actually sufficient funds within the operating budget of the. Fitness center, if it happens to be a small enough of a replacement, so Jim's actually correct in the way he's trying to express that, but. To your question, are, are all renovations paid for out of the building authority, that's actually not quite correct because of some of these other. Um, smaller uh, items that might be getting replaced and repaired and replaced, but aren't actually coming out of the repair and replacement fund.
Yes, I misunderstood that, sorry.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. All right, um.
Potential future agenda items, the shortfall for the theater.
Yeah.
I guess.
That would be good for, well. So I did read something in an email or something about. Yeah, the memo of two shortfalls on those two, yeah. Yeah, so can we get an explanation of that in a communication item? More than just the memo?
Yeah, I can give that to you probably right now, mayor, so, or have Jim come back up and do it. Basically, the synopsis of it is this, and he did, I think he did talk about it in the first budget opening discussion, so basically you have. Your uh, budget each year, right, and the expenses, Jim, why don't you come back on up and just basically say what you had said the first time? Uh, when you're going over the budget opening in the first place, so. And as he's coming up, I can also give you a little bit further background, so. As the theater has expanded its operations over the last two, three years and gone to a full. Um, play schedule, of course, they're also trying to figure out and dial in what are those expenses going to be? And what are the revenues going to be, and we're still doing that um, as we go through here, so. In the event of the budget opening here for the purpose that we had the, I can't even remember exactly what the number was, I think it was a hundred thousand and. What was the other number, thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six thousand and a hundred and fifty, and a hundred and fifty was for operations, the thirty-six was to me state compliance.
Right, operations piece, the operations piece is basically, as Jim had stated before. Um, centered around as we're trying to figure out what's going on with that, uh, on those year to years as we're dialing it in. We believe that uh, due to expenses that are arising in this current year, that we're going to not be able to make that by the end of this year. So as precautionary measures, so don't get a finding in the audit next year, we're adding in what those projected expenses would be. On the fund balance shortfall, there's a state requirement that anytime you have a negative fund balance in any fund, you've got to. Pay a particular percentage of that five percent, I believe, as Jim stated earlier, and so. That's to make sure that that's happening from the one balance shortfall from uh, this year's projected.
That's where the smaller amount came from, Wayne, you explained it really well, that was five percent of the total revenues of the entity. That has the negative shortfall, so that's where that number came from.
So we're just moving the thirty-six thousand, which is the five percent?
That is for the compliance issue, yes.
We're not moving the entire shortfall over.
No, no.
Okay, and those shortfalls were found in the audit?
Yes.
No, we had, not those ones, we had a finding last year. And as we were looking at uh, how do we resolve the situation, we're doing this in two ways, right? Number one, you're trying to dial in the operations of the theater and make that whole and uh, stable going forward. And two, obviously, we don't want to have findings in the audit year to year, so as we looked at them, we also took the other steps to make sure that we won't have another one next year. Hopefully, hopefully something else doesn't arise as well, but that's what the step is for.
Okay.
So it's, it's not something that, oh, we didn't know about this until the audit, it's just that it was one of those things that is.
No, this is us trying to prevent having a problem with the audit.
Moving from the past.
Yeah, so we, we knew that it was there, and this is proactively taking care of the state compliance so that we don't have the finding. It's we're complying with the, with the state law.
So I guess my question is why we're not just moving the entire shortfall over, only five percent? Is that a trouble?
The five.
I don't understand how all the little.
Okay.
Right, 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 well, the, the short answer to that, mayor, is if we were to. If we were to pay off the whole fund balance shortfall, uh, that's just a lot more money than we have from a budgeting standpoint. So state law allows you to pay off that fund balance across time, year to year, that's why the five percent. Is the standard that it is, and as we dial in the theater operations and get it stabilized, if the council chose to and wanted to pay more along that line to get that taken care of, then we could. But in the current year, or I should say the new year coming up, as we're trying to get the operations stable and um. Um, covering their own expenses, we don't recommend doing that.
Okay. All right, thank you, did anybody else have any other questions on this issue? Okay, thank you so much.
Yep, you bet.
All right, um, did we have a need for a closed session today?
Not for my sit, stand.
Okay, we just have one more item, actual item?
Most attention.
Hey, all in favor of adjourning? Hi? Hey, thank you, I can read lips, thank goodness.